Thank you. So folks, it is 6:00 PM, but we do not have a quorum. We are three and we need a fourth to establish a quorum. So I'm going to go ahead and mute this. And when our fourth council member joins us, we'll get started. Fair enough?
Fair enough.
Parked in front of my car, both of my, but like in front of the SUV and the car. I'm like, hey, you gotta go. He said, yeah, I'm working on it. I'm like, no, like right now.
So did you just drive through or what?
Okay, 6:02.
Gotta go.
Okay. And unmute us?
Yeah, we're good.
Oh, we're good? We're unmuted?
We're unmuted, yep.
Fantastic. Okay, council, it is 6:02 on January 7th, 2025. I will call this regular meeting of the Berry City Council to order. We do have a quorum in the room. In addition, Councillor Guston is joining us on Zoom. Counsel or manager, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, and I emailed the council about this, requesting an item 4D. It actually would become 4C because we don't have contracts.
Gotcha.
But an item 4C then to approve an authorized representative form for the clerk and myself to become the authorized representatives for a 2019 series bond issued by the city. The clerk Dawes and manager McKenzie were still the authorized reps, and we are looking to make a requisition from that bond. So just asking for the council's authorization to do that. We'll, of course, have to ratify. If the council approves it, we'll have to ratify it next week. Thank you.
Any objection, council?
Nope.
Any other adjustments to the agenda? Okay, then hearing none, we will move on to item three, which is under Visitors and Communications. Ellen Kay, did you wish to address the council regarding something that is not on the agenda?
Yes, I do. Thank you. I wanted to talk about the fact that we do not, I understand why, but that we do not have.
I'm sorry, Ellen, you're a little, you're a little, oops. I don't know what just happened.
Go there.
What happened here?
There we go. You're a little soft. I'm sorry. We can't hear you well. I'm sorry.
Okay. How is this any better?
Wait.
Is it any better?
Better, very better. Thank you.
All right, okay. I will speak as clearly as I can possibly speak. I am concerned that we understandably removed the Zoom link from the top of agendas because of the Zoom bombing that occurred. But it is proving to be a barrier to people finding out how to get on Zoom. I've each week had to walk friends through how to do it. And so I am trusting that you can have a protocol for dealing with Zoom bombers. And please return that link to the top of the agenda because it really is a barrier to participation.
Yeah, suggestion, because I've struggled with that, Ellen. And my preference would be to put the Zoom link on all of the agendas. I understand that that invites the Zoom bombing. I understand, I, the Zoom bombing is at times distasteful, gross. But the problem, but the problem is you, what I struggle with is, inasmuch as that is an inconvenience, and quite frankly, it's embarrassing, I would lean more towards having the, having the link on each page so that folks would have access.
Yeah, then we actually agree on that. I think that's, it's a, it's a bad cost to limit citizen participation in our meetings. And I have been part of a group where we've had Zoom bombers. Somebody who is paying attention and is ready to quickly eject people from a meeting. That tends to work. I don't know if Danielle has her hand up because she also has an idea, but that's, I know it can be done.
Oh, and we do.
I'm a dedicated person on that.
Yeah, and we do. It just takes 30 or 45 seconds to do it, and it's awfully uncomfortable at times while you're, that 45 seconds seems like about 15 minutes when it's occurring.
Yep, thank you.
Okay.
I'm happy to return it. Yeah, that's.
If there's no objection, council, we're gonna, we're gonna return that.
Yeah, good.
And we'll, we'll see how it goes.
Yep.
Okay, awesome. Anyone else under Visitors and Communications? Poa?
Ready.
Come on down.
Thank you. Long walk here.
Come right up to the microphone, please. Counsel, I sent you an outline that Poa called me this weekend and had a conversation about 143 North Main Street and an idea that he had. I explained to Poa that, well, we're, you know, not a very long way into this process yet. But he put the work into putting a business plan together and getting that to me. So of course, I said, Poa, if you want to come address the council under Visiting and Communications, you're welcome to do that. So they do all have the benefit of your outline.
Okay, great. Well, this is the month, this is the month in which we honor Martin Luther King, who had a dream. And I would posit that this is a dream I've had since I moved to Berry City, which happened in mid-April of 2024. And my landlord, Bob Nelson, said that he would vote for me if I run again for governor. I would have his vote if I could start a community center here. And I take that challenge seriously. He's a great landlord. And so if, has anybody had a chance to read the proposal?
I did.
Yes.
Okay, a few of you, not all of you. So I won't, I don't have it on paper, but I do have it on my iPhone here. I don't think we need to walk through it. I think more, what would be more of a better use of everybody's time is if you want to ask me questions, for those of you who read it. And I can summarize for the folks who are in the audience, perhaps. I'll just give like a, a little pitch of what I'm talking about tonight. So I read the Rural Development's plan, study of the people of Berry, which occurred, I think, started pre-pandemic and finished during the pandemic. And the three, number one, the three priorities, one, two, and three, I don't think particular order, were community well-being via a community center, river access and well-being, and housing. And I posit that a community center, a robust, neutrally political, okay? Not siloed, not addressing homelessness more than a well-heeled person coming in to volunteer. There would not, this is, we are in a moment of a culture war and a political divisiveness. Berry City can do this right. And I think that this is an opportunity right now. As this building goes through questionable futures, this is my posit. I have a future of a municipally owned and staffed by social workers from area agencies. I've talked with some executive directors already who would be interested in offering somebody on their payroll to be the clinical person on staff at that community center, which saves the big problem with staffing things, which is staff costs. The, I bring my two years of experience working for the city of Montpelier for the center that, because of its funding, the Montpelier Senior Activity Center will purportedly always be named that because somebody endowed money to it. But this would be a community center which could be funded in the long haul with, I think with this development that I came together with my mentor about. I think we really could see something that could be led by the city. And the funding in particular that I'm talking about that's, that it is important to think about timing with is there is an outreach representative from Senator Sanders' office. His name is Ethan. He's also a social worker. And he told me about USDA funding for programming and construction, which municipalities can apply to. So that's sort of one, one, one way that we might actually be able to tear that building down and build a new one. That is, I mean, can you imagine if we had federal dollars? And maybe there would be no ground floor. Maybe there'd be steel steps and everybody could do their steps. There would be an elevator that could fit a hospice bed. I mean, we could be moving people up to an elevated first floor. The teens could have, you know, the use of the, we could have kayaks and canoes. Really, the sky is the limit when you start dreaming. And I invite you all to dream with me and really think about how we can make a community center happen for our city.
Awesome. Counsel, questions? So, I mean, I realize 143 North Main. And counsel, obviously, I've had the, I've had the benefit of a previous discussion with Poa over the weekend. But I got thinking, you know, after we spoke, it wouldn't necessarily have to wait. You know, I got thinking about 143, six months to the option, whether the funds will be raised. We're all hoping that we're successful, but you never know. So I started thinking, well, what if we, and then, of course, you've got a construction period. So probably best case scenario, me being the dreamer, two years.
Sure.
And that's pretty optimistic. You know, but I like the idea. I like your enthusiasm, and I want to encourage it. So I guess my big question is how, I have two questions. Number one, would you necessarily have to wait for that location? In other words, could you start it somewhere else, even if you had community center light? And then, you know, it grew into a larger space? So that's my first question. And my second question is simply, how can I help? Who can I, who can I connect you with? I am going to connect you with Mr. McKenzie and BADC. I'm going to connect you with Tracy Lewis and the Partnership. Just so, you know, just so you'll have a few people in your rolodex to, rolodex, old guy term, to, to, to talk to. But if there's anyone else that you can think of that I could make an introduction to, you know, please let me know. But I, I just like your enthusiasm. I like your kindness. I like your approach. And I like your enthusiasm. Yes?
I did read your proposal, but I don't remember if you were planning to buy it or just rent the space.
I would have the city of Berry own it.
And would the city of Berry also be the entity responsible for creating it?
Well, you are meeting me at a crossroads in my life, which is I terminated my employment with Elevate Youth Services. Today was my last day, and we left on very good terms. I am ready to do this work if I can find somebody to pay me to do it. And I can, I can, and I, I raise that as a question to you because I don't yet know the answer. But my training is exactly in trauma-informed care. And I've studied at the policy level, at the, at the many different levels of social work. And in social, as a social worker, I took a vow to serve the most vulnerable, much like our governor. It's one of his three points. His third point is care for the most vulnerable. Well, I plan to expand my private practice, which has been on, not even on simmer. I haven't had a single client in quite a while. But I do plan to build up that practice, which is on the top of your, of the proposal. It lists my LLC, which, but I don't need to be doing that full-time. I do need to round out my work week and health insurance and all of the details of being a Vermonter. But I, what I would say is I have capacity, is what I have. I have capacity. I have enthusiasm. My enthusiasm, you should know it's not extinguishable. I've been this way since I was a child. I'm, I like people and I like projects. So if, if we can work together, if we can work together to find a way for me to start at another location, like you said, absolutely. I'm, the other entity that I would say I want to work with is Berry Up. They have an idea that my friend Hazel Torone put together in her mind, which is street captains. So there would be a street captain for every neighborhood that exists in the, in the jurisdiction of Berry City. And the street captains would, it'd be kind of like a phone tree at the next flood. Let's say her name is Tracy, and she's like already the neighborhood mother because she knows where everybody works and she knows where, what the kids' names are. And, and we say, Tracy, we're going to give you training in how to be a trauma-responsive leader. And the next time there's a flood, you're going to get, I don't know, $100 stipend a week, and we're going to give you the responsibility of checking in on the 10, the 10 families on your block. So that's something that I could, that's something that I could work with Berry Up. They already are interested in that kind of a thing. And they're in their winter phase right now of perhaps putting together grant, grants. So maybe, maybe I could be on a short-term grant fund to start doing, because in order for a community center to work, the community needs to buy into it. So this could be the pre-work, the, the surveying. Okay, we hear you want a community center, some of you. How do you want to help? I mean, if we had, imagine, imagine, how do you, how do you take down a building? With a crane, with people with pickaxes? I don't, I don't know. I don't know how you deconstruct something, but I know how you build something. And I think we could really, I'm not talking metaphorically. I'm talking literally. And so, yeah, I'm, I'm at your disposal.
Fantastic. Questions? So how we move forward? I mean, what you presented to all of us is really a concept.
Right.
That concept really has to be refined into a plan. And I think, I think your best course of action would be to start networking with people who may have, you know, for me to sit here and say, and Poa, like I keep saying, and it's not lip service, I like your enthusiasm. When people come to me and they're enthusiastic and they have ideas, I want to do everything I can to encourage them. But, but I'm not going to give you lip service and say, well, gee, the city can give you a job tomorrow. Go see Nicholas. It's, we're, you know, even if that were to come to fruition, we are months away from that. But I want to do everything I can to encourage you and to help you. So I think where we move forward, you have the email addresses of all the councillors. If you could reach out to us and say, well, here's what you could do to help me. You know, do you know anyone at, for example, Washington County Mental Health? Do you know anyone at the Agency of Human Services that I can network with in this regard? You know, that's where our experience as a mayor and as councillors and as a manager are invaluable because we know a lot of people. I don't know if you've ever met Tess Taylor, who's sitting in the back row right there. But Tess, Tess has spent a lifetime serving, serving Berry and certainly has as large a rolodex contact list nowadays, as large a contact list probably as I do. So I'd encourage you to reach out to Tess and reach out to as many people as you can and network because I do think a community center, a teen center, a senior center, all combined under one roof, I think that's a great idea.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for giving me my marching orders. As my dad, I talked to my father about this, who was an attorney for 53 years. And he said, well, gather your spades. And so I will continue doing the work. I can take it more literally. I can take charge of this now. And now that I have time, where I previously 37, 37.5 of my finest hours went to an agency, to Elevate Youth Services, where they're excited about the teen center part already. I will, I, just while we're talking now, before I email you, I'll say that any executive director contacts that you have would be helpful, especially for people, places that employ social workers or people like social workers.
Got a ton of those.
And I think that's where it starts. That's what an executive director is, is the person in, in the capacity that they can say, yes, we can grow in that direction. Or yes, we are ready, you know, tell me when, when this starts. Some, some organizations are already like poised.
Mm-hmm. Fantastic.
Well, I think that's a good note to end on, the word poised.
Thank you.
Thank you for it, guys. Thank you.
Thanks for coming by. Truly.
My pleasure.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes?
I did invite Jim McWilliams and Bernie Allen to speak as well about the solstice basketball game during Visitors and Communication, if they're willing.
Oh, sure. And, and I'll be with in two seconds. Gentlemen, come on up. There's an extra chair there. Just watch it when you sit down in the blue chairs. Don't sit down like hard. Now you know why. Cassidy Earring?
I got the chair behind you.
Thank you.
Please.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. Much appreciated. My name is Jim McWilliam, and for the last seven years, I've been the marketing director up at the Berry Civic Center, the BORI shrink, and certainly what I call the Cathedral of Vermont Basketball, the Berry Auditorium. This past weekend was the second year in which we've had a winter solstice in, program at the Berry Auditorium. Last year, we had four high schools within the area come to Berry, each of which was rival in their own conference or in their own division. And it was a well-received program. There were four basketball games involving. There were four basketball games involving both the women and the men from Spalding High School, Montpelier High School, Hazen Union over in Hardwick and People's Academy in Morrisville. We had nice crowds and we made a few pennies. After reviewing that weekend, the three of us, Robert, Bernie and myself, two other persons, Red Griggs and Paula Dolan, we just thought maybe we could make this a little bigger, a little more exciting. So we reserved a Friday night and a Saturday, and this came to fruition just this past weekend. On Friday night, we had Williamstown Girls and Boys playing, Twinfield Girls and Boys, nice crowds. Saturday morning at 10 o'clock, the same four as the previous year came back. In the first game, we nearly sold out the seating capacity in the auditorium when Spalding High School played Montpelier High School. Large percentages of the persons in that group were from Montpelier because their boys' team is one of the best teams in the state of Vermont. It has put us on the map. Just in the past week, I've had two different teams call me or send a text to me or use a Rolodex, I'm not sure. If they too could come to the auditorium in another year or two, one of which is Union 32. The one that I'm most excited about is the Catholic High School in Chittenden County, Rice Memorial, D1 school. If we crack that nut, goodness knows what could happen. Now, as an encore to that whole piece, on the 24th of this month, we do have two Division One schools coming to the Berry Auditorium. This could very well be the first time we've had D1 schools play in the auditorium for 20-plus years. The girls and the boys' team from Essex Junction High School in Mount Mansfield, Union High School out in Jericho are coming. Matter of fact, this Thursday, Robert, Bernie, myself are journeying down to Chittenden County to meet with a representative from Mount Mansfield, just so that we are ready to host that and do the very best job we can. It's an exciting time at the auditorium. We do this for numbers of reasons, but first and foremost on my list, when I started marketing in the Berry Auditorium, the banners, which I hope some of you have seen when you've come for a blood drive or an athletic event, there were eight of them hanging in the auditorium. This is seven years ago. Five, the sponsorship agreement had expired. Today, there are 49 businesses advertising in the Berry Auditorium and equally half that amount over in the BOR. Both buildings are full. The revenue which is generated from that is basically, I refer to it as free money because it doesn't cost us anything other than my salary and time. These two gentlemen volunteer theirs. But the Berry Auditorium and the BOR, I think, is represented well by the gentleman on my left and right, and I think it's becoming more and more, I'm not sure I want to say respected, but it's certainly becoming more well-known. The reason for doing these events is that the 49 sponsors in that building and the 30 sponsors in the BOR all tell me the same thing. We want to see the lights on in this building. Simply saying, they want to see events in the building. This year, the busiest time for me in redoing these annual contracts, which about 80% of the sponsors are on, are October, November, December. Of the 49 sponsors that were in the auditoriums this fall, only two did not renew for the next week. That to me speaks volumes that they appreciate what our group is doing in the auditorium. And those two persons, those two sponsors, one went out of business, Sun Common, and the other changed ownership, Berry Electric. So technically, one might say, no one left the auditorium. It's an exciting time. There are a lot of good things happening. The auditorium is front and center as it should be, not only with the schools, but the organization that run those schools, the Vermont Principal Association. They are supportive, they appreciate everything that we're doing to bring teams together. Having spoken about the biggest event, which is coming on February 28th and March 1st, just through some conversation and some hard work with different persons from Montpelier, where the VPA is located, to some of the folks here in Berry who are involved, the Berry Auditorium, for the first time ever, on February 28th and March 1st, will be hosting the Vermont State High School semifinals and final wrestling championships. Never has it been done in Berry AE, i.e. the auditorium.
All four divisions.
In four divisions. The whole, the whole state will be there. We're told by persons who have gone to these, when they've been held in Otter Valley Union High School in Brandon or Virginia Union High School or Middlebury High School, coming to the odd, the coaches are on fire with excitement, as is the VPA. And we're told on both of those days, we can expect at least 1,000 to 1,200 people a day coming to the auditorium. Now, one of the pieces, as a slide-in or as a join-on with Tracy Lewis, we made a phone call just last week and asked if she could prepare a sign, for lack of a better term, that would announce what restaurants are available here in Berry when those fans come in. She did it and there's, every restaurant from A to Z is on that sign, as are many, many businesses. But stop and think what it does for the city when we have the solstice, when we have the basketball tournament by the VPA in March, which has been longstanding, and now we're getting the wrestling championship. Think what the gas stations do for business, what the convenience stores do. I mean, you need a six-pack of soda to drive home, you need to fill up the gas, or maybe they slide into the cornerstone or slide into the quarry for lunch or dinner. I mean, what we do on the Hill is a perfect marriage for the folks downtown. And we've got a great group of people that we're always thinking about doing new things. But I'm, as well, I can speak for these gentlemen to my left and right. I couldn't sleep when I got home Saturday night. I was just so happy and so thankful that we pulled that off again with such success, such success. Of course, we always have to worry about the weather and that's always something we start looking at, a good week to tend, but only God can change that. We're pretty good, but we can't change the weather.
I'm going to jump in for just a quick second.
You'll need to pull the microphone just in, in front of you there, Bernie, if you would.
Why don't you just take over with BGA because I want you to talk about the BGA Granite.
Absolutely. Thank you, Bernie. The Berry Granite Association, for the past four years, has been our major sponsor up on the Hill. And we thank them more than you can possibly imagine as do you because it's a very sizable donation. And it's been well-received and well-put to use. And dollars are coming forth from that, those efforts and from the great sponsorship. I mean, the loyalty in the city of Berry is second to none. And clearly, the best example is the Berry Granite Association. Absolutely.
I think you should also talk about the colleges that have come in.
We tried, yeah, we tried that. The very first program that we put together two years ago, we thought about bringing in the colleges. And so we made some phone calls, drops, and actually went to college campuses and spoke with the athletic directors. We, and they all said, yeah, we'd like to try it. We had a, I say girls and boys, should I say women and men, whatever. We had the women and men come in from Castleton State College, from Johnson State College, from Norwich University, the men's team from VTC, and the women's team from Linden State College, now Northern Vermont University or whatever. It was okay. But we didn't get as many persons as we were hoping we'd get. And then the, the part of the wall, part of the stones from the wall started to fall off. First, Castleton State College men said they're not coming back because they were going to go to Westchester County to a tournament there, which makes perfectly good sense. That's one of their primary recruiting areas in, you know, metropolitan New York. And they said, yes, when the women are not going to come back next year. So be it right or wrong, and from I talking with these folks said, you know, let's just scrap the, let's just scrap the college thing. We're not getting the crowds, we can't get teams to come. So we went with the high school programs. If you could have been up there Saturday, you would have to agree, I think, it was a pretty good decision from all of us because, again, parking lots on both sides of that building, over by the BOR, front and back of the auditorium, completely full, completely.
Renewed interest with Johnson and Norwich coming back next year for men and women.
We had, thank you, Robert. We did have a short program just one afternoon where we had the Norwich University men come in this year to play the Johnson, the Vermont State College campus at Johnson come in. We had a pretty good crowd. Next year, they both want to come back. Both want to come back. It's a reoccurring situation. They all want to come back. And they're going to bring their women's and men's team back, so we've already scheduled that for next year. More traffic. I mean, we've got Mount Mansfield coming in on the 24th. They're bringing a student bus full of kids. They're bringing some dancers in their dance program at Mount Mansfield High School. They're bringing their music teacher who will sing the National Anthem. I mean, not only is it going to be a good basketball evening, it's going to be a good community evening, a good, if I may, cultural evening. So it's exciting to be a part of this and I hope that you can hear that in my voice. And on these two, as you can see, we're all together. Not one person putting this together. We've got a great team. We've got a new manager up on the Hill and Tom Baker, who works with us and his staff and so forth. It's come a long ways in the seven years I've been a, a part of this, marketing and programming, scheduling up on the Hill. And I'm proud to do it. Proud, proud to do it. Anything else?
Very well said. And like I said, Jim's done, it was his idea getting started here. I do, before I leave you, I want you to, I want you to all hear about what goes on Sunday nights at the auditorium too, and what has been going on Sunday nights for quite a few years now. Michael comes up with his, with his children quite often, but the Mutua sponsors, free time or open gym time at the auditorium on Sunday nights from 5:00 to 6:30, kind of like the skating that goes on at the BOR. And we get anywhere from 40 when we start the season. Last Sunday, we had 61 kids in, in the building. And it's sometimes, and we get more than that sometimes as the year gets closer to March when we, when we, when we get done. But, but the auditorium's wide open. It's just like when we all were growing up and going up there on Saturday mornings, trying to find an open hoop and, and enjoy ourselves. But it's a, it's a wonderful thing. Mutua pays the cost of, of the auditorium and it's been very well-received for, for a lot of years. We have fun every Sunday night up there.
Awesome. You all probably know this. You know what's happening at the auditorium this Saturday?
Yes, I do. My wife is on the committee.
Yes, no?
We gave up my daughter's birthday party for it. Trade location.
This is one of the.
Thank you.
The inaugural ball for the governor is going to be held in the Berry Auditorium. That is, in the hotel business, that's like a seven-star occasion. I mean, that, I, I, it'll get, it'll be on every press outlet you can possibly think, the televisions, the radios and everything, newspapers, I hope. It's exciting time to be involved in Berry City. Very exciting. And it's, even though we've done an awful lot, we still think we can do it. I'm not going to tell you what it is because I'm still working on it. But I'm working on a plan right now to be done in May that could bring hundreds of people to the auditorium and be a significant revenue producer, if I may, in one day.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Well, and listen, you know, I don't think you have to sell this council on the value of the auditorium, you know, because of the, many people working hard. And believe me, we can do all the physical improvements we want and we plan on doing a lot of physical improvements. I'm sure you're all excited about that and as excited as we are. But we all certainly know that unless we have people like you promoting great programs, promoting events, doesn't matter. You can have the greatest facility in the world and if people aren't showing up, if people aren't promoting it, if people aren't chasing sponsors, well, it doesn't work. So we're, we are, I personally, and I think I speak for the council, we are all excited about the future of that facility with the physical upgrades that we're going to do that will, you know, obviously make that building even more attractive in the summer months when it tends to be about 95 degrees in the auditorium. And once we get the HVAC system upgraded, you know, I think you're going to see that facility put to a lot more use.
And BOR as well.
Absolutely, both facilities.
And BOR as well with the turf.
Exactly.
Big, big improvement. Big add-on, big add-on.
Yeah, manager Starella Castro just kind of snuck the turf in on us.
Very stealthy.
It was a stealth soccer move.
So go make fun of soccer people. Right, Nicholas?
Right.
We're already advertising to, to rent turf time this spring and summer. And here it is, what? The month of January, for crying out loud. So, yeah, it's a whole different environment and a whole different approach on the Hill now.
Look, it's a, it's a great asset. We've all known that. It's a great asset that is finally getting the attention it deserves. And, like I said, and it's because of people like you. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Excuse me a moment, please. I'm wondering if anybody is monitoring the chat or the hands or the waiting room. People are waiting.
I am. We've only, believe it or not, Ellen, we've only had, we've only had two. It's been kind of a lengthy visits and communications, so.
Yeah.
Actually, I saw that.
Curious about the two-minute rule also because that seems to be out the window.
Yeah, it kind of did. Amy Galford, you actually had your hand up at one point. Did you put it back down or?
What about John? He's been, John's been waiting.
John, would you like to go next? You've been waiting as well.
To go according procedure, here I'm going to be up close to the microphone, announce my name, John LePage. Everybody in the room knows who I am. I noticed a lot of familiar names on the screen. And the first thing I want to do is to acknowledge our previous crowd, the three people, that I got a really good giggle out of realizing I'm not the oldest guy in the room. This guy's been around longer than me and very invested in the city, very active, very responsible for a lot of the positive things we have going on. And probably shopped at J.J. Newberry's at some point, like I did as a kid, okay? Probably, there's enough people still around that are, you know, using some canes that bought from the Lincoln Mercury dealer on West Street, okay? I've been a mere 12 years in this city, but I've been 70 years in this community. I was born in the building that used to be the Berry City Hospital. And in Berry Town, growing up on LePage Road, it was kind of, you looked out the window when the mailman or the milkman went by. Things are different. Everything's different. Everything changes. The speed at which they change is a whole nother thing. And in the last, let's say, 50 years, 40 years, somewhere in there, the change compared to the previous 40 or 50 is off the charts. And we are in the midst of change, the need for change. Secondly, I'd like to address the previous speaker to these gentlemen, who said something about, I don't know how buildings are demolished, I know how they're built. I, I kind of appreciated that because I know how, and like a lot of people in this room know how buildings are demolished, it's called the drop ball. And that's what happened to the Montgomery Ward's building, speaking of old brick buildings, that no longer served a purpose on the corner of North Main Street and West Street. My father put in a bid for hauling away the, the bricks and the rubble. And that was my first paying job, is you get paid a penny of brick for chipping the mortar off these bricks. And they were recycled before recycling was a word. bricks. And they were recycled before recycling was a word. And have we lost that? Have we lost the resources, the potential in this city? The city that is the county seat of Washington County, the county that houses the state capitol. We have a lot of potential here that a lot of people, especially newcomers, I've talked to probably no less than 100 people who have been in Berry just as a visitor, who have come here and moved here. My next door neighbor from Brooklyn, an amazing artist. And not a one of them have got a clue that this is the county seat. Okay? So there's a lot going on that we have not tapped into. We do have people that come here. We have a lot, a lot of stuff going on. Rise Up Bakery is, to me, is a shining star. We're talking about a bakery that was, talk about a derelict building. Somebody had a vision and restored that to an amazingly successful operation. Okay? And I'm just, those speakers acknowledge for the value in what we've got going on here being done for now. The one thing that I want to mention in the context of this flap that has erupted over the Jacobs Building, as it's been called, and that is nastiness. There are counselors and people who've posted on Front Port Forum, myself included, who have been the recipient of a lot of nasty comments. I've been bid to shut up. Okay? And nastiness has no place. For those people that disagree, there's no need for nastiness. It doesn't change anything. The other thing I want to address is how a lot of people in this community feel that this measure to go forward with some plans with this building was rushed. This is not a small fragment of our population that feels the rushed situation with it. I just want that to sink in. I'm not saying there's a solution or that there's, I'm not full of answers. I'm full of questions. And I think questions are as important as answers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you, John.
Thank you.
Joellen had her hand up. And I don't know if it went down, but she had her hand up earlier.
Okay, we're going to move on from visitor to standing communications unless there is anyone else. Where?
Sort of me. I, I don't know where to put this, but I got a communication from a constituent asking a few questions about the, the decision. And I don't know if it's appropriate to bring it up right now or where.
You know, we had that discussion last week. We had that vote last week. And sometimes the best thing to do is move on.
Well, I, in some ways, I.
So I don't know what we could.
I just, I'm just putting it out here. And I think it's considerate to the constituent to hear, to know.
All right. If you would like to ask question, the question's on her behalf. I don't know if we can answer them.
The only two items, the only two items were the question about the legality of Councilor Waz's act's vote. Was that indeed?
That has been thoroughly resolved through legal opinion.
Okay. I hadn't, I hadn't understood that. I had only understood that when Nicholas asked the question, that the answer, and this is how I heard it, and I know I have lousy hearing, is that it was better to say yes, he should vote, just in case.
We can, we can address that. I think, I think the manager would be able to address that in his report. Because after the meeting, I asked the manager to follow up. He was already following up, so I didn't have to ask him.
Okay.
But he has and has spoken at length with our attorney. And what is the second question?
Second one was just clarification about the legality of discussing the B A D C funding request in executive session as opposed to having put it forward in public session the first time.
It was covered under real estate and legal contracts, both. Because as you know, the city is going to enter into an agreement. You know, the $400,000 isn't, isn't a blank check, so to speak. There are certain conditions that come with that. So we were negotiating those conditions. So in two, so legal on both counts. Okay. Anyone else under visitors and communications? Then counsel, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We're going to approve the minutes of 12:30, 24. We are going to, do you have any licenses and permits, ma'am? No licenses and permits. And under 4C, that has been changed to approving the bond bank authorization, representatives authorization, as the manager emailed you earlier this, or excuse me, late last week. Any discussion?
So moved.
Please.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
And a second. Moved and seconded. Now, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion is presented. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Thank you very much, Counsel Augustine. Motion carries. Counsel will move on to 4A, which is to approve the city warrants for the week of 1/8, 25. Motion, please.
So moved.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion is presented. Please signify by saying aye.
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 Such an enthusiastic group. We're losing you. We're losing you. And those opposed, there don't hear any abstentions. Motion carries. This city clerk, have you got a report for us?
Just a few things. Dog license renewals are now up for sale through April 1. Please provide us with your information, including your name, address, phone number, dog's name. We need rabies certificates up to date with, just don't assume that we have that up-to-date rabies certificate. Have it in hand when you come to renew your dog's license. This can also be done online if you provide us with the rabies certificate through email and make your payment through the online payment system. Then we can mail that rabies or the license out to you. Secondly, parking permits are now up for sale. Day permits are on an annual basis. It allows you to park at any green top meter within the city. Overnight permits are semi-annual, running from January to June and then July to December. These are for designated parking lots through the city and designated parking spaces within those parking lots. For any more details, you please call or email the city clerk's office.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Manager, have you got a report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The sewer we're landing on North Main Street between Blackwell and Forest Street is nearly complete. Green Mountain Pipeline will be coming back the week of January 20 to do the last remaining segment. So we'll send out, when we have the specific dates and times, we'll send out the alerts on regroup and social media for the traffic disruptions that will be occurring. They do this overnight, so there's luckily fewer traffic issues. We're very pleased with the, with this project. It came, obviously it had a great savings to replacing that entire stretch of sewer, and also came in very timely because, as, as we all know, a section of the sewer collapsed right as they were about to replace it. So it couldn't have been better timing for us to get that done. And there is rough road there. As if you've traveled that area, you know, we are getting that paved. That's where the collapse happened and they had to dig. So that will be paved. So just hang with us for a little bit longer. It'll be short-lived. But just travel through, with care through that area until it is, until it is repaved. Want to remind counselors and members of the public that we are hosting a public safety forum on Monday, January 13. It'll be from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. at the second floor conference room in Alumni Hall. And it will also have a Zoom option. The, we will be joined, Chief Vale will, will be there from the city, as will I. And the state's attorney, Michelle Donnelly, will be present, as well as several members of our legislative delegation. This issue is obviously cross-sector. It's not just the municipality. It's also judicial system legislative branch. So that's why we thought it's helpful to have all those people in the room and happy to have our partners there join us for this event. We're looking forward to sharing our strategies and our challenges from the city's perspective. But really, it'll be an opportunity for, you know, we don't want to do, most of the talking, we want to do most of the listening. So really want to hear from residents about their experiences, their suggestions, and, and hopefully it's an informative event for, for them and us. And then the last item on my list was to Counsel Sean Bell's question. I sent counsel earlier this afternoon, a more thorough update on this. But as we all know, at the last meeting on December 30, the legal question came up about Counselor Waz's participation. During the meeting, I was able to speak to the city attorney, who, as Counselor Sean Bell said, he provided a sort of a snap judgment, as I call it, that the city was in a slightly better legal position if Counselor Sean, Counselor Waz's act participated. So he did. The city attorney conducted additional research since that meeting to give us a more thorough legal answer, and they have since confirmed their initial advice. So they have said that Counselor Waz's participation at that meeting was legal and valid. They have advised the city council to vote to accept the resignation, and that will be on the January 14 agenda. So just, so you're aware why you see that on the agenda. It's for that reason. And that, and that's, that's all I have from the attorneys there and the research.
Thank you for the clarification.
You got it.
Yes.
Were you able to give any more information about the community ordinance you were talking about with the time verges?
Oh, sure. Yeah, we're.
I just kind of read about it in the paper slightly and was like, whoa, wait a second.
Yeah, we're, it's something we're in the stages of researching. We will, and we'll, we'll provide some of this at the forum, just to give folks a sense of what that ordinance did in Brattleboro. But in this summer, fall, Brattleboro's select board passed an ordinance that tried to address some of these quality of life issues that a lot of communities are struggling to, to handle. And so as an example, this, this is not the crux of it, but as an example of what it did, one thing is it would put limitations on panhandling within certain distances of an ATM.
Right.
Right? So someone is going to get money from an ATM, they're withdrawing money. You're in a vulnerable position because you may, somebody may see you going into the ATM to get money, and they may approach you for money. It may be dark. You know, you may be in a vulnerable position. You may have your children with you, whatever the case may be. You may feel threatened, right? And so this was one of the things that their ordinance did, was to place sort of save zones around things like that. You know, an ATM would have a radius within which you couldn't panhandle, which protects both the individual's right to panhandle and request money, but also protects the, the ability of the person who's going to the ATM to also have a sense of safety in doing so, right? Balancing both people's rights. So that's just one example. There was another provision that talks about high response properties. So there's, you know, and Chief Vale will, will speak more eloquently to this. But you know, there's, when we look at the data from the police department, there tend to be properties where multiple calls happen time and time again. And so Brattleboro tried to address that as well. And we were looking at those provisions ourselves. So what we plan to do at the forum is give a very broad outline of what this ordinance does. You know, this is, and, and this is one possible solution, right? This isn't perhaps the, the panacea to the problem, but it's one approach. Brattleboro ended up overturning it on a representative town meeting. But, and I, you know, I suspect, I don't want to speak for them because I don't know what their situation, but I suspect they're still looking at other options. But this was something when we saw it was compelling to us as, as an approach, as a, as a possible approach.
Right.
And it may not be right for Berry, and that's okay. But it's just, we figured that it was a good opportunity to get feedback from the community. And, and of course, if it does progress, it'll have to come to this council.
I appreciate it. I like it. Thank you.
And if you do want to do, I'm sorry.
Will there be updated information for the public safety meetings, you know, about where we are in terms of crimes and?
Yes.
Stuff about vandalism.
Correct. Yes, Counsel Stockwell. So Chief Vale is preparing a similar, similar presentation to what we did. I think it was in September when we did like a quality of life summary, right? When things were kind of spiking. So he'll do something similar, just year-to-date, compares to previous years, where are the calls happening, you know, hotspots, that sort of thing. So he'll give a, he'll give that update as well. And then we'll, and then we'll, we'll briefly summarize the core tenets of this potential ordinance, and then really turn it over to the public to, to hear their thoughts. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. And as I was saying, counsel, if you wouldn't want to go, that ordinance is actually still on the Town of Brattleboro webpage. You know, the history behind it. Counsel passed it. And as you know, I mean, Brattleboro is a fairly sizable community. It's not a small town. It's a fairly sizable, it's, it's a town by definition for Vermont, but it's a fairly large municipality. And in a subsequent town meeting vote, they, it was overturned by 130 people. 130 people attending, 140, excuse me, because 75 were opposed at a whole community. 75 were opposed, 65 were in favor, and it was overturned. Since then, I've spoken to a few members of their select board, and they're thinking of dusting it off again. What they're hearing from members of the community was that that wasn't really what they wanted. That, in having read the ordinance a few times, I think it's, it's well done. It's not an attempt to vilify people or cast people in a certain light. What it is an attempt to do is, is just to find what is acceptable behavior for everyone. As the manager said, when you're in certain vulnerable positions, just letting people know that, look, we, we will protect your rights, you know, to engage in certain behavior, but not if it makes people uncomfortable, not if it makes them feel unsafe. Ellen Kay, do you have a question?
A comment and a point of information. I am from Brattleboro. I was a town meeting member. I want to explain to people that Brattleboro has what's called representative town meeting, which means that those people that you mentioned, the numbers of people, are each elected in the ward that they live in. And it is their role to go to town meeting to vote. This was a special town meeting, and those elected representatives voted.
Correct.
So I wanted to make sure that people understood it wasn't just random people who showed up at a meeting.
Correct. My mom's from Brattleboro as well. Counsel, any other questions of the manager? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counsel, we'll move on to new business. Item 8A is the second warned reading of ordinance 2024-03, winter parking ban. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak to that issue? Or do they, is there anyone who has any questions about that issue? Counsel, you did have, I believe you did have a copy of the proposed ordinance in your packet as well. Questions? Okay. Then we'll declare the hearing closed. Would someone like to warn the ordinance 2024-03 as having been read a second time?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
And seconded. Thank you very much. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion is presented. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. Thank you very much. Counsel will move on to 8B on the agenda. This is to discuss the resident fiscal year budget survey. Why don't I let you?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. So we have, I've heard from, from several members of the council about wanting to do a resident survey as we start the, as we develop the FY '26 budget, which I think is a great idea. And my impetus in bringing this item at this agenda was because of, as we worked on our budget calendar, we're looking to come to the council at the February 11 meeting with really sort of a baseline budget meeting, right? This is, these are some of the indicators we're looking at. This is what we're seeing. And at that meeting, we'd like to get some direction from the council about where we should go. And so we thought that it would be important to have had a survey issued and have some feedback by then to make that meeting more productive for, for yourselves and for the residents who do participate. So that when we go into the, sort of the staff process, we can be better informed by the, the council's thinking, and the council can be informed by what the residents have, have shared with you. So that was really the, the impetus of bringing it today. I, I shared in the packet, I looked up some example surveys, and I shared three with you in the packet. One of them's from our, our neighbor city, Montpelier, which is the first, the first example you see there. And then I found two really interesting and I thought helpful surveys that were done by two municipalities in Ontario, Canada. And so I shared those as well. I think, you know, my takeaways from the surveys were pretty straightforward. You get some demographic information. You get some rankings of priorities. So I don't think there's a, it's not too tough of a science to create one. And I think we, you know, the staff level, we can, we can certainly get one put together that I, I think would get you some meaningful information. Wanted to have this opportunity for the council to share with us things that you want to hear or want to make sure is included in the survey. Anything specific, you know, to Berry that would help inform you as you inform us of, of where we should be going with the budget. would help inform you as you inform us of where we should be going with the budget. The one thing that I think is important, to make it a valuable survey for everybody, for the residents who are completing it, for you as the recipients of it, and for us as, you know, trying to implement it, is to be, you know, make sure that we're getting relevant feedback, right? So we've talked a lot about how so much of our budget is fixed, both on the expense side and the revenue side. So 75% of our expenses are pretty much going to be the same no matter what we do in this room, right? And that's because we are a people-heavy operation, and we have to pay those salaries. And most of those salaries are determined by collective bargaining agreements that I negotiate on your behalf and the council approves, right? So those costs are baked in. We have health insurance that is set by the Green Mountain Care Board. We have to pay those no matter what they are, as high as they might go. You know, we have, we drive trucks, we drive cruisers, they need fuel, we need to pay for gas every year. So, right, so there's all this litany of things that, no matter what we do here, we have to pay those bills. And so I think from my perspective, I think it would be important, as I look through these surveys, I see a lot of things that, you know, if we got this feedback, we might not be able to do much about, right? So I think it would be important for council to include perhaps feedback on some of those discretionary things. Things like the bulky waste pickup, which we do as a great service to our residents, but we are not required to do by any law, ordinance, or statute, right? Things like leaf disposal, which now I think we have a great agreement with the Town of Barry to use theirs, but we don't have to do that, right? And so I know this one struck a chord last year, but not having as many cemetery maintenance people. I know, Mayor, that seemed to, that was like a third rail I learned.
That's that rail.
Yeah. And things like, you know, the pool hours, right? Do we run the pool fewer hours? Those are things that we don't want to do, nobody wants to do, but realistically, if we need to cut things, that's, those are the places we look, right? Unless, you know, we get into personnel issues, then we're talking unfortunately layoffs, right? Because that's, otherwise, there's no personnel savings, really. So my only suggestion to the council is to, and I'm happy to, you know, to craft this, you know, I think we should have specific feedback on some of those discretionary things that we don't have to include in the budget. My guess is most people are going to be strongly supportive of those. Those are some of the most popular services we do provide. So I can't imagine where people will want to get rid of them, but I think it's important, that will be important feedback to get. So that was my only observation, that I think that that particular piece is important, because if we issue the way these surveys, some of these surveys are written, people may feel like they're not heard. And it's not that they're not heard, it's that no matter how much work we do, we can't do much about the things that they, you know, respond to, right? So, but other than that, you know, really, this was an opportunity for you to tell us specific things we should put on there, because otherwise, like I said, I don't think it's too difficult of a science. You can see from these communities, most of them are, besides the presentation of them, they're pretty much asking the same stuff. And I don't think that's a bad thing. It just, I think, proves that it's, it'll be hard for us, for me to mess it up. So.
Councillor Stockwell?
So in-house staff has the capacity to pull something like this together?
Yeah, I would work on this with Don, and we were, you know, we started to look at, we talked to our colleagues in Montpelier about the tool that they use. I think we can, I think we can do it with, you know, reasonable use of time. I think it's also an important function, so I think it's very worth us spending the time to get it right.
I liked the Port Hope one. I thought the Port Hope one was a good model, because it was less complex than the Montpelier one, and some information we don't really need.
Yeah.
The other thing I liked about the Port Hope was that it asked about service satisfaction, and it had this point where it said, do you realize this is our infrastructure gap? So I think some ways of saying, as you point out, this is where we are, this is what we have to do, this is the reality, so that people start with a frame that helps them think through what's really possible. And, but then I thought, I thought the Port Hope one was really the best. It was the easiest to go through, it highlighted the most important stuff, and it made clear to people, you don't have all the choices in the world, you have a really limited number of choices.
Yeah, I agree. I thought, I thought this was, I mean, I thought these pages were incredibly valuable.
Yep.
Where basically what it, what it shows here, I'm sorry, it's hard to see, but it was in our packet and the packet that's on the city webpage, but the blue here are the residents saying, we want you to maintain those services, don't cut them. The green is where the residents are saying, interestingly enough, address housing issues. Most of the residents are saying, we want you to do something and address those. And then the red areas up here, not just telling what this community said, most people said initiatives relating to diversity, inclusiveness, they actually wanted them cut. I don't think that would be the case here in Barry. But this was, you know, it was two pages that really provided some
Right, right.
Really insightful information and would give the manager and the council a little bit of direction in terms of, you know, do not cut these services. I suspect in Barry, the message would be, don't cut public safety. Maintain it, you don't have to increase it, maybe folks would want it increased, but, you know, don't cut it. Question I had about the surveys, when you, when you put a survey together, and I will get to you, councillor Augustine, because you are, you are so, you are so nerding around this, you're going to explode. Me too. Is there some way that we could ask in the survey, not anything that would ever be available to the council or the general public, where someone is living? And the only reason I ask that question is I really want to see the results of a survey, but I really want to see the results of an accurate survey. And if all of a sudden, people started logging on, who either didn't live here, or people logged on using several different, you know, they wanted their voice to be heard more. So they wanted to, you know, when you only get 500 or 1,000, I hope we get 5,000, but when you only get 500 or 1,000 people participating in a survey, it doesn't take many folks participating more than once to start to skew the results. So if we did say, well, where do you live, and it's a mandatory field, letting people know, we are not sharing this information with the council, with the public, it's going to reside with the manager, and I suspect, you know, the assistant manager, but it would just help them, if we looked at a result and said, okay, everyone wants us to cut this, that doesn't make any sense, none of us have ever heard that, and all of a sudden, we notice that there were 100 respondents living at 1 North Main Street, well, they could, they could cull those responses out, or if there was an address that didn't exist. So I know some folks may have a little bit of apprehension about that, because, but I can assure you, I do it only to protect the accuracy of the survey, and we would never share that information with anyone.
Yeah, I think there's tools that have the capacity for that. We'd have to explore which ones we could, we could tap into. Sometimes those might be add-on features, but I agree that for something like this, it would be worthwhile to, you know, if we're going to take the time and energy to get a survey, we should take the time and energy to do it right and make sure it's not skewed. So I know there's tools that have the capacity for that, and when we put it together, we'll make sure that we use those to the extent we can.
Awesome. Councillor Augustine?
Yeah, I have just a couple of thoughts. I would echo everyone's appreciations for the Port Hope survey, not just the survey, which I did think was thoughtfully designed, but also the way it was presented. I thought that was a really clear and useful, digestible way of communicating the information that came out of the survey. So I'd echo all of that. One piece that they, and I believe what other survey asked, that I found particularly useful, was splitting up the responses, or at least sharing the diversity of the responses by ward, because I thought that got at some interesting, some interesting ways, and particularly the appreciation for services and the way that they felt services were working in their area. And I think that's useful information geographically, as well as for us who are representing specific segments of the city, to be able to sort of understand the perspectives of our own neighborhoods in this survey form. Certainly, we talk to people. But I liked the way that was presented. I'm not wild about asking people for addresses, but I can see the, I can see the need to ask people to verify that in some way they do live in Barry City. I would ask that if whatever approach we take in takes into consideration the ability for an unhoused individual living in Barry City to be able to participate in the survey without a stigma of not putting in an exact address, or whatever mechanism makes that possible, I would like that included. And sort of building on that, and I realize councillor Stockwell asked a very thoughtful question about city staff capacity, I would love if there is both a physical way to fill out this survey, and maybe it's in physical copies at the library, at City Hall, and a couple of other locations, but I would love maybe one public information night, an evening at the library, where there can be a little bit of a presentation, and there can be a little bit of a feedback, and then maybe everyone at that then fills out the survey at the end of it, just so there's a place people who may not be comfortable with whatever survey tool is used can go, if they're more of a people person, if they feel comfortable maybe with the library as a trusted partner, they can go and feel safe and comfortable filling that out, maybe with tech support or with whatever they need to get their, get their voice heard.
Good suggestions. Thank you. Yes?
Just agreeing with everything that's been said. Good about the idea that the wards need to be included, it's nice to see how that, you know, filters out. And the Port Hope one appeared to be more simple to follow in every capacity. And I, I think for the sake of everybody, the more simple we can keep it, the better. And I don't know if it's therefore really difficult to structure it, to make it seem simple, because simple on the top isn't always what got there on the bottom. But anyway, I like the simplicity, I like keeping it straightforward.
Yes, Mr. Lepage?
Not necessarily by loud voice, but on the issue of addresses with the survey, I want to acknowledge people who are reticent to go there, and I understand that, having been hacked online and how many, you don't have to go too far to find somebody that hasn't had some sort of compromise with the personal information. We are in the hacking age, it's a fact of life. And so these people's reticence is understandable, and for someone who really has a problem with putting out personal information because of the potential being a victim, I'd be very much in favor of having an address as part of the survey, specifically for the reason that was mentioned, to prevent one individual or entity from entering more than one vote, one point on any of these surveys, that it would be very critical to not only in the introduction to the survey, but to otherwise inform people the purpose of that. The assurance that we're never going to share this, I mean, there's websites all over the place that assure you when you choose, you know, accept the cookies or whatever, nothing will be shared, and it's manure. You know, everything's shared all the time. And so people are understandably reticent, the more we can give them the reason for what we do, the better. Extremely important that that is put out there in plain language and ultra-visible. Thank you.
Thank you. Danielle?
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Again, thank you.
Yeah, so I was just wondering if your goal is to create a statistically representative survey, because that's one of the things that may, like if that's your goal, that may help you to not have to have skewed results. And the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, they have worked on, not specifically like a citywide survey like this, but a municipal data project, and it's, the focus is having that statistically representative data to help make data-driven decisions. So it's possible they might be able to help sort of steer you in that direction, if you aren't already planning to like work with a consultant on it. Thanks.
Great suggestion. Thank you. Bern Rose?
Hi, thanks. I really appreciated what Amanda said, councillor Augustine, those were some of my thoughts too, so I won't repeat them. The other thing is, in Barry, we have almost a 50/50 of landlords and, who are, for the most part, I don't think, living in Barry, and of tenants. And so I wonder how you would look at part of the survey for people who aren't living here, but are property owners here, and how do we make sure that tenants get all of this information as well? Because I would like to see representation of tenant responses as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, I'm not sure, I guess to answer your question, Bern, I'm not, I'm not sure how we could, how we could point the survey at, at folks who are renting versus people who are, who are owning. That would be, I mean, I don't, we don't, we don't maintain that type of database. We know who the property owners are, because we have property tax records and property tax bills. We know who the landlords are, because they have to register their properties, but we don't ask their tenants to register in any manner. So I guess all we'd have to do is just, you know, the same way that we, that we put out the, you know, we'd put it out on Front Porch Forum, we put it out on social media, we could put an ad on the Times Argus, you know, so we can, we can certainly do our very best to ensure, you know, we could put flyers at the library, we can do our best to ensure that we reach everyone, but I, you know, I guess to answer your question, or try to answer your question, we'd use the same method that we use for the parking ban. We could even put it up in off days when it's not snowing, we could even say resident survey available at, and we've got four points that could be flashing it throughout the city. So we'll do our best. It's a good point, but we'll do our best.
Thank you. Can I just finish that, that thought? I guess part of the question was looking at who, who is a resident? Is a resident somebody who is a landlord but doesn't live here? Or are residents only people who are, have this as a legal residence? And so who gets to participate? When you're looking at that, are you listening to out-of-town landlords? Are those people participating? And if so, is there a way to, in the survey, in your questionnaire about where do people live, is to ask, you know, what, is somebody a tenant? Is somebody a landlord? Because we've been having discussions about how to make some of those things better, how to have more ADUs, and so maybe we can get other information from people while we're doing this as well. Thanks.
You're welcome. That's actually a really good question, because there are folks who pay property taxes in the city who don't reside in the city. They don't, they don't get a vote in the city because they don't reside here. I always intended this to be a resident survey, with no disrespect intended towards, you know, folks who are non-residents who pay property taxes here, but I'm really interested, personally, I'm interested in hearing from voters, because if we, if we, if folks who are non-residents, and I'm not trying to pick a fight or say this is going to happen, but if, if we allowed our decisions to be driven by folks who are non-residents but pay property taxes here, because all of them participate in this survey and it skews the results of the survey, we're trying to come up with a budget that the voters will support, and one that is, that is reflective of the will of the voters. So if we start, if we start including the opinions, not that they don't matter, but if we start including the opinions of non-voters, then it's going to kind of defeat the purpose. That's just my opinion, may not mean anything.
Thank you.
Councillor Augustine?
Sure, I largely echo that in response to Bern. I'm most interested in people who live in, well, I'm frankly only interested in people who live in Barry City. I would expand beyond simply voters, because there are certainly people who live here in the city who should have a say in city services, even if on town meeting day, they don't go and vote yes or no on the budget. That could include folks younger than 18 years old. I would in fact be thrilled beyond measure if a 16-year-old decided to take a municipal budget survey. Or folks who may not have voting status for a lot of reasons. There are certainly moments in time when we as council should consider the opinions of landlords who don't live in the city, but I don't think this is, this is one of them. I would like to know what the people who live in Barry City, who access these services, and the bulk of whom will be voting, or have the opportunity to vote on town meeting day, I want to know what they have to say about how we structure our budget and how we portion our services.
Thank you. Amy Gofford? I'm sorry, did you?
Yeah, if I could, just on that point, Amy, interrupt you, just because it's relevant to what councillor Augustine just said. You know, the Miford poll didn't get a lot of love, but they did kind of address this. You know, the Meaford poll didn't get a lot of love, but they did kind of address this. They had, one of their questions does ask right up front, what is your connection to the municipality? And they have resident operates a business, works in Meaford or lives in nearby and uses services. So that, that's also another opportunity if people, you know, if you get to the point, you know, if somebody's going to want to respond to the survey who shouldn't, chances are we're, despite the, the guardrails we put in, we may not be able to prevent that. But at least if most people are honest on how they respond to this question, even if you do get those stragglers, you get a sense of how many people are, are those residents as you look at the results.
And then you could filter.
Yeah.
You could filter the survey to say, okay, I want to see the results just from residents.
Yeah, right. Depending on the tool.
Yeah. So let's all think about that, because I, you know, you see the value, you want people to be heard. And even if someone is choosing, you know, they, they don't choose to live here, but they, but they invest here and they work here. And that's certainly the case so much in Berry. And we could come right out and ask, do you live in Berry Town? You know, do you live in Berry Town and you own property in the city? Or you live in Berry Town and you work in the city? Or you live in East Montpelier and work in the city? And we could still filter the polls so that we could say, okay, Mr. Manager, show us what our residents think. Don't, just let's, you know, let's exclude these other, these other respondents and let's look at just what our residents are thinking. So Amy, your turn.
Yeah. A couple ideas. You know, I think it's, it's hard to get around, like, how are you going to prevent people from spamming it or answering multiple times? I think maybe the length of the survey can help with that, if it's long enough that it takes a while to do. I, I don't know how much computers can fill up surveys for people, maybe there's no way to fight that. But on the other side, you don't want the survey to be too long, because some people will just quit if it's too long. So I think kind of thinking about the length of it and the complexity, just to, to balance that so people will actually be able to finish it. I'm not a fan of the wards. I don't think the wards reflect anything functional about the city or, or groups. I would vote for using the 27 neighborhoods that are identified in the municipal plan and have people identify which of the 27 neighborhoods they live in, because I think those are going to, I think if you summarize those by those 27 neighborhoods, and maybe you could have come up with someone else, but there was a, a plan for those, I think those say more about the experiences people have living in the city and might be more interesting than like Ward Three is to me a meaningless geographic divider, even though that's where I live. And that might be something you could use instead of people filling in their address too. Like, I'm looking at the city plan right now, it's got a list of the 27, it's got a little colorful map, even if people don't like maps. There's a, an index with a street listed, which, with each of the 27. So just, just an idea for something in terms of sorting out the data, like, we still can't agree on what counts as the north end, but, you know, like, I can see if somebody lives in neighborhood 26 versus neighborhood 27 versus neighborhood three, I know where they are. And maybe, and I think some of the example surveys have a little bit of this, but I think as an educational tool, if you can, you know, a lot of it's that the city budget is kind of fixed, we can't change it much. But I think like providing a summary of that, like you often do either with pie charts or bar charts in the annual budget presentations. And then same thing for showing people what the current budgets are, so not just do you want to increase or decrease this, because people may have wildly wrong ideas, and I'm sure I do too, about what the current actual budgets are for different things. So maybe like trying to find some way of like, either showing a single summary or with particular questions, like the budget for, you know, road maintenance right now is this. Do you want that to go up or down? Because I think it'll be more meaningful if people are doing that relative to the real number. If you can figure out a simple way to, to show people what it is right now and then they're reacting to that, not just like, I don't know what they spend on that, but I want it to be more or less.
All good suggestions. Thank you. Anyone else? We may have to take a survey to conduct this survey. No, I, I mean, we've, we've heard a lot of good suggestions, and I really like your last point about, we actually could include people who work in Berry City, people who own, you know, I own a business in Berry. I don't reside here, but I own a business here. I don't reside here, but I, but I work here. It would be interesting to include those people and just, you know, I'm always, I always enjoy being able to sort of turn the crystal and look at it from different angles. And it would give us the ability, we could still, you know, keep the, keep the resident side, we could filter it out. But it would be interesting to see how, how our residents look at the city, look at our budget, look at our challenges versus folks who own a business here, people who work here, people who may own property here, but they don't reside here. I mean, it would just be interesting to see another point of view. I don't know how you all feel about that. Yeah, so I think we're all, I mean, I'm just looking forward to getting a good representative survey from our citizens. So thank you very much for bringing that up and for following up on that. Okay, Council, we're at item 8C on the agenda. This is to set the elevation priorities. The manager did put a memorandum in your packet. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so there's a, there's a memo and a map in your packet. This follows up a couple of meetings that, where we've talked about the subject. As, as you all know, there was funding appropriated in the state budget for elevations. Berry City was notified of a $900,000 award under this program. The, the program's parameters are that each, each project is capped at $300,000. So we knew at least, at a minimum, three projects would, would be funded under this program. We received 13 intakes of interest from property owners for this, for this program. As I noted in the memo, those were whittled down over time. One was determined not eligible because this is only for residential properties and it was a commercial property. One received a buyout, and in our, in our perspective, as a staff, this, you know, this isn't a rule, but in our perspective, this was sort of a, an escape hatch for that particular homeowner. And so we thought that this funding should focus, should go to other homeowners. One was eliminated by the Agency of Natural Resources. They believe that there shouldn't be any, any reason to build in that floodway, and this is a, a property on Brooklyn Street. And so they, A and R said that they wouldn't support a, an elevation there. And so A and R is a, has a sort of a veto on this program, so that's why that property was eliminated. And the fourth was Good Sam, which the council discussed briefly, but fortunately, I believe Good Sam has identified alternative funding, so it's, it's a moot point. So that's, that's a positive outcome. So that left nine properties. And, you know, when we looked at this, we, we got some advice from the, Roy and Alex, who've been working on the river project with us. And where we focus, and by we, I mean myself and Janet, who've been working through this, we saw four properties that kind of stood out for us as, as a first tier of priorities. Two of them on, are on Berlin Street and one of them is on Vine Street, so clustered closely together. And one of them was on River Street. As you can see from the map on the second page of the memo, you can see that the roughly the areas where the yellow stars represent the, the properties that we're proposing to you to, to be, be funded under this program. The red dots are the ones that remain eligible, but we, we ranked lower. And, and the reason, you know, there aren't any really good reasons to rank, you know, everyone needs assistance, there really aren't any good reasons to do it. The reason we found a distinction was because there is potential redevelopment in that neighborhood that we've talked about. And so, you know, we, we thought, it's not that they're not deserving of elevation, we thought if we had to make priorities, these properties on Berlin Street, Vine Street, and River Street made more sense at this moment to pursue. And if the council were to proceed in that way with the four properties, it would result in approximately $225,000 budgets per project. You know, there's a lot of unknowns in these elevations, but when we were doing some preliminary estimates, when we were seeking this funding, we were looking at about $150,000 to $200,000 range for an elevation. So if we're at 225, we're still feeling pretty good about being able to fund the whole project. We do say here though, that, you know, if, if the awards do come at a greater cost than 225, they, they would go to the property owner. So we're, we're pretty, we would be transparent about that if the council agrees. So that's, that's really it. We're, you know, we're looking for, if you agree with it, we're looking for your approval to, to proceed and contact those four property owners and, and move forward with them. As I said, the remaining five property owners, I don't think are any less deserving. We had to find a prioritization somehow, and, and that's what we're recommending at this moment.
Yes.
Be wondering if we couldn't, if a property owner wasn't able to use the maximum, they had extra left over, if we could then turn that over
Yes.
to property owners that met, or exceeded the maximum.
We would be able to. I, I think that would be fine. Yeah, the, the money is, we have flexibility within the, the, the funding to allocate it as we see fit, with the exception that it has to be at least three projects, right? It can't go above $300,000, but within that, you know, the council could choose, you know, we have the nine properties eligible. The council could also choose to do $100,000 per, right? And, and I, I think, you know, when Jen and I discussed that, we, we don't think that makes much sense, because that still leaves a lot of open questions for those people. And you may not get any elevations, or not, certainly not as many elevations out of that. So within the bucket, so long as we don't cross that 300 threshold per project, we're able to allocate. In fact, Council during, I thought your question was going to be, could we, if we had leftover, could we allocate it to some of the five? That's also a possibility, right? So that, that could also work as well. That may not leave enough money for them to do it, but that's, that's an option as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Strachan?
Couple of questions. One is, I thought that we had other plans for River Street other than having properties on the side of the river, that we're looking at, at flood mitigation for that area.
We, we are. This, this particular, on River Street, this is
On the other side?
This is on the other side, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And this, actually, I won't ask that question here. So you think it'll be about 225, but there's flexibility for people to say, here's my, it would cost me $100,000, it would cost me 275. And so we have an average, but we can be flexible in terms of what we're actually giving people. As long as it doesn't exceed the 300,000.
Absolutely. As long as it doesn't exceed the 300,000 per project, we can be flexible. So we could, we could be more aggressive, right? We could say, let's pick one or two of these red dots and, and proceed with those. What that does, it just, it just knocks down that average award.
Right.
And it makes it, you know, I think the next one down would knock it down below $200,000 per, per project. So you start to get a little bit less comfortable with that in terms of covering the whole project. I think the ideal would be that we cover the whole elevation. That's, that's how Janet and I entered, looking at it, and we felt most comfortable saying, feeling that we could cover the whole elevation with the four. Once you get to the five, I think the average goes to 180,000. And so that's, you're, you're pretty close to your margins there, and everything has to go really right for that one to, you know. And so, not to say that it couldn't, but it, it's a little riskier. So
So that's, that seems fine. And do, and are there general, the general condition of the house, do we know that? When they're applying, do we say, well, this will elevate your house and the rest of the house is quite functional, so this is a great investment for you and for the neighborhood?
We have a general sense. It's, it's hard to say with total confidence, but we, we have for many of these houses some permit information from work they've done. So we have, I would say, I would characterize it as a general sense. Now, what could also happen is, you know, these projects are, will require engineering and, and surveying and all sorts of, of work ahead of time. It's possible that one or two get eliminated, right? And so we, we may come to, you know, the, the DRB, I believe, last year granted a waiver for a structure that physically could not be elevated, right? And so we may not know that until we get into the weeds on some of these, but we feel we've crossed the, the threshold of A and R, which was an important one. And our general sense is that they, they, we feel comfortable that they should proceed, knowing that there's a chance that they may not proceed depending on what the engineering turns back.
Thank you.
So, so we, if we go with the four, so there were nine total eligible.
Yes.
You've had to whittle it down to four. You'd have less of a difficult time if you only had to whittle it down to six, obviously. So at six, that would be an award of $150,000 per property. And, you know, what I'm thinking about with some of these properties is whether, so let's say the total cost is $200,000 per. Whether it would be, could we, can we approach, are we able to approach any of the homeowners and say, well, look, first of all, you're going to eliminate your flood insurance, which is significant. That's not a small dollar amount for someone's home or building. So you're going to eliminate your flood insurance, there's going to be a savings there. Do you have, there are other borrowing programs throughout the state. So I guess what I'm getting at is, is could we drill down a little bit more? I mean, if we could do, I, I'm glad we can help four, but what if we drilled down a little bit more and we could help five, or maybe even help six? And yes, the homeowners may have to come up, they may have to go and borrow some money on their own, but if they're saving $3,000 or $4,000 in flood insurance, that might, that might take care of the mortgage. And in addition, obviously, now you've got a home that was at risk, well, what's that home worth reasonably? If any of you were going to buy it, you just wouldn't buy it. But now it's not at risk. It's been elevated, and it's been elevated to modern standards. So now that home is worth $100,000 or $125,000 more. You see what I'm getting at? I'm wondering if we could help more people just by drilling down a little bit into what, and if, and if they can't, they can't. If they're not able to borrow, if they just don't meet the criteria, that's great, but maybe we could be, you know, drill down a little bit more and possibly help five or six homeowners instead of four. So I, I'm not at all, thank you for the work
Yeah.
that you and Janet have put into this, but that's what I would like to do, is just try to drill down a little bit more so we could see if maybe we could help more folks. Councilor Augustin, you haven't had a chance yet.
Yeah, well, I just want to build on that. I, I would also love to find ways to, to expand the possibility of this funding. And I'm wondering if this program could work in tandem with the revolving loan fund that we just set up through Downstreet, which does provide significant chunks of money. And it is, it's a loan, it's not an outright grant in the way that this funding would be, but it might stretch some of those just enough that we could add another house to the list. So I would love to explore that possibility.
So we'll proceed as, yes, I'm sorry.
Just one other question
Of course.
along the lines of your thoughts, Mr. Mayor. If we went by your suggestion, would that then preclude people who couldn't come up with loan money? Or would you, they then be eligible for the full 225? I mean, I, I understand trying
No, no, it's not, it's not my intention to preclude, pre- You know, I, I mean, could the manager come back with that suggestion? That's not my intention at all. But what if the manager did come back and say, well, I went to these eight people and they are all able to borrow X amount of dollars, so look, if we do it this way and people chip in, we can do eight homes. Unfortunately, this ninth person, they don't have the ability to borrow. Well, I wouldn't be inclined to throw that night, but, but boy, they were one of our first four. I wouldn't be inclined to throw, throw them out, so I'm sorry, but I wouldn't be inclined to exclude them from the program if they were part of the original four. I'm just saying, I'd just like to drill down a little bit to see if there's any way that we could do, hey, you know, five as opposed to four is 25% more.
Right. But That's when you're doing that, you know, it sounds like there's some agreement as to how the four got chosen. And so let's say all of them say, well, no, I can't do it. Or one person says
And they can't do it? You know, if we can't get there, if we can't get there, we can't get there. And I'd be okay with that.
Okay.
I'd just like to try.
I mean, I just, I would, I would hate to see somebody who had been in the hopper, quote unquote, lose a place.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't be in favor of that happening. I'm just hoping that maybe through other, you know, other funding sources, Councilor Augustin mentioned the revolving loan fund, you know, there, there could be a lot of, lot of different, let's ask the question to see if maybe we can do five or six, and if we end up with the original four, well, at least we tried. Yes?
I like the city manager's motion, and I think it's a good one for us to take because it would move us forward, and we have, we have this money and this capacity to do it. My other feeling is that even sometimes if people can take on debt, given what they've been through and the other expenses that are just, that, that may not be able to be fully encompassed by this money, we really want people to stay in Berry and to feel like the city is supporting them. So I, I am in favor of this motion. So I am in favor of this motion as is.
No, and that's fine if that's the way the council wants to do it. Like I said, I just like to ask the question, which is a question we haven't asked. Do you have the ability, you know, do you have flood insurance? Okay, that you're going to have that savings. Do you have the ability, is there a loan program that you might qualify for so that instead of doing three of your neighbors, we could do four of your neighbors? So I'm not saying I ultimately, if, if the answer from the manager was, it's just not an option for anyone, I certainly accept the four. But I just like, you know, again, before we sort of close the door on the remaining five, I'd just like to ask the question, that's all. Now, if the city, and the question is pretty simple. If the city of Berry, you know, and I'm sure these folks probably haven't had the engineering done. They probably, but I'm willing to bet, matter of fact, I know that some of them have had contractors out there. Some of them have gotten estimates. I know that. So again, if we could offer 150,000 to six homeowners as opposed to 225 to four, so that's it. I'm not rigid on it and I absolutely intend to move forward. No contractors are going to mobilize to start digging out a foundation in January. So, so, you know, we do have, we do have the luxury of a little bit of time. Not a ton, so. But I absolutely want to move forward with the manager's plan, just drill down a little bit. You okay with that?
I think so, but I think.
All I was going to say is that I agree with you in essence. And also having done any little bit of housework, especially with old houses or whatever, one thing leads to the other and what looked like a 100,000 isn't anymore or 150. It just expands. And you know that, I'm sure.
Yes, we do. It's horrifying. And it's tough, but, but you can always, you know, ask the question. And, and again, if you pose it to some of the homeowners that way and say, if you could make your project work at 180,000, that means we can help one more of your neighbors. And people might say, you know what, I may have to go borrow 20,000, but I'm saving 4,000 a year on my, on my flood insurance. So that's going to more than cover any mortgage payment I'll have. I'd love to see another one of my neighbors helped. That's all. But if we have to move forward with the, with the four, Sam, we'll move forward with the four. I mean, we're going to.
No, I think it's time to ask the question.
Help me at least four people. I wish it was nine, you know, that's all. So we good to?
What do you think the city manager?
What's that?
You clear as mud on this?
Yeah, I mean, if, I would probably start, I'd start with the four. And I think the only thing I've been thinking through in my head is, if they haven't done the engineering, do they know how much they need to borrow or how much their gap might be? That's the only thing that I'm a little iffy on about whether we'll be able to get too clear of information from, just because it's unknown, right? Like until, until you do the engineering on it, you don't know exactly how much the elevation will cost. And so if the city's offering 150 or 160, you don't know if it's 20 or 30,000. That's, I think we could probably figure out a template, but that's, that's the only thing I was thinking through is that. It might be tough to get a good sense on the delta in terms of what they might need to commit, but.
I think it would be hard, actually.
But that's, you know, could we try, you know, a place or I think we could. It just may not be exact and so there'll be that, that aspect to it.
You okay?
Okay.
All right. Okay, Counsel Augustine, you good?
Yes.
Okay, super. Thank you. Counsel, we are at 8D on the agenda. This is to approve the legal services policy. This was forwarded in your packet by the manager. My only comment that I had, I think we can all read, so we all understand the need for it. And I suspect any reasonable person would agree with the need for it. The only point that I made, the only change I'd like to see to the policy, and I spoke to the manager this afternoon about this, is sometimes there are instances where the council may go into executive session. Let's say, for example, we have, we take issue with something that the manager and assistant manager have done. And we're not quite sure whether it's legal and we need to, and we say, you know, we think it is, but we're not sure and the stakes are high. So we need, it's a bond or something. We need to be doubly sure. But we think what they did was okay. We may consent in executive session amongst ourselves. We may say, we're not taking a formal vote, but we're all consenting to the city council. We're not going to involve the manager or assistant manager. This involves them. Sometimes merely coming out into open session and saying, we're going to seek a legal opinion on this issue can impugn someone's reputation. And sometimes as council members, we've been here before, we're seeking a legal opinion because we simply don't know. You know, we're, we're not lawyers and we're not municipal managers. And so sometimes, so I, what I said to the manager, I said, look, I don't have an issue with any of this, but sometime, but as long, so it would have to be by majority vote of the council or by consent of the council. Does that make sense to all of you?
Yes.
Other than that, I'm in favor of it. And the only, I guess the only comment that I would have, Nicholas, is that as municipal, as folks who are elected municipally, we always have the option independently of seeking a legal opinion. We all do. Shouldn't do it on our own, shouldn't go rogue. That's not, that's not, you know, you should have the courtesy of letting other counselors or whatever know. But I just wanted to make that clear that we always have that option of, any of the, any of us do. We can all call VLCT at any given time. And as long as we say, look, this is why I'm acting and I'm acting on my own behalf because I have a question, I'm not acting on behalf of the city council. You know, that's perfectly fine. But as a courtesy, if someone is doing that, you know, as a courtesy, you should let your fellow counselors know. That's all. So I think we're good on it. Counsel Augustine?
I just wanted to thank the manager for writing such a clear and comprehensive policy. I appreciate, in my own role as an elected official, I appreciate being able to refer to that and read to that as I, as I think things through. So I thought this was a, it was well done and I appreciate it.
Super. So we'll make that change and, and get it out and we'll get it on the agenda. I think we all understand, so I mean, get it on the agenda whenever, a meeting, two meetings, whenever. Okay, Counsel, we are at item 8E on the agenda. This is the flood resiliency plan update. Counsel Augustine? And I think, I think we gotta, yeah, give manager just a moment to tee up your PowerPoint, please.
All right. All set, Nicholas?
All set.
All right, thank you. And actually, it's not even my PowerPoint to be very upfront about this. I'm introducing this agenda item as I have made the commitment in the past that we will check in on at least, at least one item from the flood resiliency plan at every single city council meeting. Just before the holidays, the city manager and I sat down, mapped out updates as for what sort of fit within the rhythm of city work and the staff's capacity and, and what made sense to update at what point. So we planned those out through March and this is the sort of first in that rhythm. I will say, preceding this, as I have said about every update, if any member of the community or any member of council feels strongly that they would like to see an update on a plan that doesn't fit with the planned order, that is fine too. I would like them, I would love them to reach out and we can, we can move the order around if there is an update and get something on the schedule sooner. So this section of the flood resiliency plan is 3.3, which governs much needed infrastructure updates to the Berry Auditorium. Thank you. And it does this because in the context of flood resiliency, the Berry City Auditorium is the regional shelter, the regional emergency shelter for central Vermont. And it is currently somewhat inadequate to that purpose. It served us well during both floods, but I think one of the things that we realized during that flooding is that it needs to be better. And I think we've known that for a while. And there was a previous extant grant to provide those upgrades as well as a new grant that city staff sought out and successfully applied for. And so this is my cue to turn it over to the city manager to follow up on this. This is a presentation for members of the community to really fully understand the scope of the work that will be done on the auditorium over the coming years and what it will take to get there. So all yours, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Counsel Augustine. And yeah, as you can see on the slide deck, this is straight from the plan. 3.3 upgrades to the Berry Auditorium, as Counsel Augustine said. And actually, it's great that we, very fitting, we had Jim here today to talk about it. It's a recreational jewel and also has come into use unfortunately too many times as a regional emergency shelter in the last couple of years. So it's a very important facility for many reasons to our community and to the region. So this is, the box here is also the progress and next steps contained in the flood resiliency plan. And the colored, the colored boxes and arrows are, are the updates to that information. So the progress noted in the plan refers to the congressionally directed spending grant from Senator Sanders for upgrades and the match for the project. And then the MERP grant, which is Municipal Energy Resiliency Program grant, which was 500,000 award total and half of it, 250,000 for the auditorium. So on the congressionally directed spending grant, the city received 3.451 million dollars through this, through this grant, which is housed at the USDA. And the initial project, when it was applied for, was scoped at six point, almost 6.3 million dollars. We've been working closely with USDA. As you may recall, we had a pretty firm deadline on a match that we asked for an extension for because it was right around the time of the 23 flood. And that was granted. We've been working closely with USDA since then. And what we've learned is that we're able to proceed with the project without a match so long as we, you know, work within the scope of what was applied for, right? So the original scope was HVAC upgrades, electrical upgrades and ADA improvements, right? So we are now working to get, looking to get engineering done to scope that work out, check those boxes as much as we can and then proceed with the funding that we have, right? And so it'll be, it'll, it'll cover all those boxes of the original scope and we'll fill in the gaps where we can with additional funding, like this MERP grant, which is that, that second box below it. In November 2024, we received notification that we had been awarded this grant. As I mentioned, it's just a shade under 500,000 total with half of it supporting the odd and the other half making upgrades here at City Hall. And, you know, fortunately, the scope of the MERP grant for the odd fits in really well with the initial purpose of the Sanders grant. So it'll help us sort of fill in that gap scope wise. And that is building envelope, lighting, so touching the electrical, of course, and going to energy efficiency lighting and HVAC. So this, you know, the great thing about this MERP funding, it requires absolutely no match. We started to contact architects to begin the design work for this as well. So very excited about these two things working so well together to help make these, you know, get, get these improvements closer to reality for the auditorium. And then in terms of the next steps, the flood resiliency plan talks about, you know, taking the steps outlined in the CDS grant and refers to the, to the match funding and to seeking it. So we will, as I mentioned, we're, we're going to start contracting for the engineering work after our recent conversations with USDA. And we're looking to hit all those aspects of the original scope to be able to work within the funding that was received. So that was it from us, you know, we're, Tom Baker and I are hoping to have engineering and architect, and engineering firm and architectural firm contracted this winter. And, and looking forward to, you know, the CDS grant has been with us for a couple of years now. It's obviously a couple of tough years in between. But we're looking forward to really getting started on, on making the improvements to that, to that building.
Thank you. Questions? Any questions?
Just one comma.
Yes.
Is there any way that we can get the back stairs fixed at the auditorium where the concrete is? So the rebarb is not just sticking out?
I'm sure we can. I think that, that is really expensive work. I know we did a little bit of the concrete work there this summer. But I'll talk to Tom about it. I know he, he has a to do list up there. I'm sure that's, that's on it. It's probably, it's probably a matter of waiting for funds to free up in a, in a new budget cycle.
Rear stairs?
Yeah, on the left side, every time we go up there, every Sunday night for basketball, we have to go in through the back doors. So on that left side, the rebar is kind of sticking out and the cement's all chipped up.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. So Counsel, we'll move on to item 8F on the agenda. This is to declare Counsel Wazisak's council seat vacant as of 11:59 PM on December 31, 2024, and approve the warning for the February 13, 2025 Award Caucus to elect a counselor from Ward 2. Good?
Yeah.
Anyone care to make that motion?
So moved.
Moved. We'll give Mr. Dearing the second. Any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Thank you very much, Counsel Augustine. Under upcoming businesses, is there anything that Counsel would like to see on the agenda coming up? We've got a pretty packed agenda for our next meeting, things, so is there anything, yes?
Yes, I know you've talked about increasing the, and changing and amending the vacant housing ordinance. And I'm just wondering, should counsel work on that? What's a timeline? What's a possibility? And I was also, I know that we talked a while ago when we were doing the minimum housing ordinance revision about Airbnb licensing it, so I'd also like an update on that. And is it easy to do to get a grant update? Like what's pending? What's been rejected? What are we going to develop so that we sort of know, like, here's potential, here's potential maybes for funding? Is that easy enough to do?
It should be, yeah. Janet's the grant coordinator, so she, she can probably pull something together for us that's high level on that, yeah. And I, and I will add it to the agenda because, but just to give you the brief update here on the, on the short term rental ordinance, we have been working with the city attorney on, on something to that effect. We've also been watching closely a legal challenge in Burlington about this. So kind of sort of waiting to see how that plays out as well because our, what our lawyers worked on was similar to what other municipalities had done and that was going through a legal process. But I'll get a more formal update scheduled.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Counsel Augustine.
Oh, Counsel Augustine, excuse me.
Thank you. I would speak to Counsel Stockwell's point, which is that Ed Stanek, who's a Ward 2 constituent of mine, had reached out to me with some of his ideas that he had brought forth at our previous meeting about amending some of the ordinance around vacancies. And I connected him with the planning commission, which I believe is the correct body to begin that kind of ordinance review. And so at some point, that may move to counsel. And I would just use this moment to say that this is, this is already planned for the agenda. But next week, the flood resiliency plan update will be around community building micro grants, which is a program that I talked, have talked a lot about last spring and a little bit into the summer and that came out of the Berry Up process that Poeha mentioned at the very beginning of the meeting that happened shortly after the July 2023 flooding. So that will, I'm looking forward to sharing that with folks next week.
Thank you. Okay, Counsel, we're at roundtable. Counsel Stockwell?
I'll pass.
Counsel Sean Bell?
I'll pass.
Counsel Dearing?
Drive safe out there and watch out for my buses on the road.
Buses are bigger than my car, so I'm always very careful. Counsel Augustine?
I would just say, I think I mentioned this before and a couple of folks know that I've been largely housebound and recovering from surgery for the last couple of weeks and that it has brought me to a new appreciation of community that so, so many people have been so kind to reach out, to bring by really delicious soup and to reading, to more reading material and things like that. And I've been, I've been very grateful for the Berry community in these last couple of weeks as I am unaccustomed to, to having to rest so much. So thank you.
Well, we're, we're grateful for you and we're happy that you're feeling better and mending nicely. We know it's going to be, going to be a little bit yet, but we're happy just the same. It's going to be a fun. It's going to be a fun weekend coming up. I'll be attending the inauguration down at the Capitol, Vermont Capitol, on the 9th, and then we'll be welcoming people to Berry and attending Governor Scott's inaugural ball, which will be held at the auditorium on Saturday evening. If any of you are interested in attending, the Berry Opera House is distributing tickets, so you can sign up there. And with that, Council, I think we do need an executive session for a brief personal update. It will be brief, so I'll need a motion for findings, please.
So moved.
Thank you. Moved by Councilor Stockwell, seconded by Councilor Chambel. For findings, all those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you. And we'll need a motion to enter executive session. The manager will be joining us. Please. Moved by Councilor Stockwell, seconded by Councilor Chambel. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you. No action, Dave. We'll be, we'll be in executive session.
Who's in favor of turning the heat back on?
I was thinking the same thing today. Oh, my. Normally, I'm not like that, but. Normally, I'm not like that, but.